Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This planning commission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Phangas.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale, excused. Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Bonar, excused.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions in the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a very smooth meeting. Thank you very much for your attention to this. Moving on to item number four, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five. Item number five is for possible action to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of July 8, 2014. I would entertain a motion to obey this portion to the Planning Commission meeting of September 9, 2014.
Mr. Chair, the motion is to obey the final minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of July 8, 2014, until the September 9, 2014 meeting.
Thank you. Motion to obey the decision on item number five to the September 9, 2014 Planning Commission carries.
For the abstention?
I was not here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number six, moving on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the September 9, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 35, TXT 54664. The following items have been requested to be withdrawn without prejudice. Item number 21, VAR 55027, and item number 22, SUP 54829. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, I'll close it for public comment. Do any of the commissioners wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
The motion is to obey item 35 until the September 9, 2014 Planning Commission meeting, and to withdraw without prejudice items 21 and 22.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion carries. Going on to the consent items portion of the agenda, consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Item number seven and related items number eight, nine, and 10, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion is to approve the items on the consent portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve items seven, eight, nine, and 10 carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number seven is final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days. Items number eight, nine, and 10 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda, the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Beginning with item number 11, which is SUP 54578, the applicant owner is Archland Property One LLC. For possible action on request for a special use permit to add a dual-drive-through lane at an existing restaurant with drive-through at 7150 West Craig Road in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony, staff is recommending approval. Item number 12 is SUP 54786. The applicant is Alexander Alexandroff. The owner is Great Wash Park LLC. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler on sale establishment in conjunction with an existing 2,161 square-foot restaurant with a 65-square-foot outdoor patio with a waiver to allow a 141-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is the minimum required at 420 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite 150, in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 13 is SUP 54827. The applicant is Habitat for Humanity Las Vegas, Inc. The owner is Sahara Crossing LP. For possible action on request for a major amendment of an approved special use permit for a proposed 12,770 square-foot expansion to an existing thrift shop use at 4580 West Sahara Avenue, Suite Number 120, in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 14 is MSP 54794. The applicant owner is Smiths Food and Drug Centers, Inc. For possible action on request for a major amendment to approve master sign plan to allow signage on a fuel canopy at 7050 North Durango Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Do I have a motion on these items?
Mr. Chair, the motion is to approve items 11 through 14.
Open the public hearing.
What's that?
We need to open and close.
Oh, do you want to open to public?
Yeah.
Okay, before we vote, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment on items on the one motion, one vote calendar between 11 through 14. Seeing none, do any of the commissioners wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll renew my motion to approve items 11 through 14 on the one motion, one vote.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve items 11 through 14 on the one motion, one vote portion, it carries. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, items 11 through 14 are all final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Going on to the public hearing items, beginning with item number 15, which is VAR 53871. The applicant owner is Dennis Pritchard. For possible action on request for a variance to allow an accessory structure to be located nine feet from the rear property line where 10 feet is required, and five feet from the side property line where 10 feet is required at 9109 Ghost Mountain Avenue in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to construct an 861-square-foot accessory structure within the required side and rear yard setback area as required by code. Alternate design and/or placement of the proposed accessory structure could allow for conformance to Title 19 requirements. In view of an absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, is concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature, and staff recommends denial of the variance request. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, the applicant is not here to attend. My name is Chuck Cummings. I live at 9112 Ghost Mountain Avenue, across the street from the property in question. And I'm here for approval of this. I've been in this community since the days that the community was built. I've been there over 10 years, and I have a structure similar to that in a property right behind me that is less than five feet away from the wall, and I don't see any issues or concerns that I have. And it's my understanding that it's been approved through the homeowners' association. And it's nice to see that people are making investment in the community to help improve some jobs that will be created through this, in addition to that, improve home values in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Okay, I'll speak on it then. I've checked this out personally myself, and I think the homeowners' association's okay with it. My understanding that the neighbors all surrounding are okay with this, and so you have my support to have this to be approved. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, my motion is to approve item 15, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion to approve item number 15 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Moving on now to item number 16, which is SUP 53624. The applicant is Walgreen Company. The owner is PP Land LP. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for an accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within an existing 14,820 square-foot general retail establishment at 7755 North Durango Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting 175, or parentheses, 50 square feet of floor space dedicated to the sale of alcohol beverage, which represents less than 2% of the total retail floor space. The subject site is an existing shopping center which provides cross-access and shared parking throughout the entire commercial center. The proposed use meets the minimum special use requirements, is within 400 feet, is not within 400 feet of any protected uses. As such, staff recommends approval with conditions. If denied, no alcohol may be sold on the premises. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant? Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Matthew Duchesne, 400 South Rampart, on behalf of Walgreens. I appreciate the time you're giving me tonight. As you know, I've been to this area, you know, it's just off Durango and 95, right in the middle of Town Center. And the purpose of Town Center, when it was, I guess when it was born, was to have all this retail, including shopping centers, including supermarkets, even including pharmacies and the like, to be held in one center, in one good location where people can go and get all that they need in one location. At this location where we're asking, where Walgreens is asking, there is four separate other locations, retail outlets that sell packaged liquor. There's the Albertsons, there's also the Fresh &amp; Easy, there's the 7-Eleven, and there's also that gas station, which is right across the street. We believe that having the alcohol, or having the packaged alcohol over at Walgreens is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. The square footage, we have a 14,000-square-foot place. They said it's less than 2%. Actually, that was with the 175 square feet. We're only asking for 50 square feet. So really, it's less than 1% of our square footage would be dedicated to the packaged liquor. It would be only 50 square feet. And the location of this in the store would be near, if you've seen the store, would be near where the photo booth is, so there will be employee there to be able to actually have direct access, direct viewpoint into where the packaged liquor is going to be, because there'll be two sets of doors for the refrigerated, and the other down the aisle will be right in the view of the photo shop center. Now, we held a neighborhood meeting in this action, and as you may know from reading it, two people showed up at the neighborhood meeting. However, what I have handed over to you is Walgreens, at this location, took it upon itself to do, at best, an informal petition, to sign, to ask the people in the area, can you sign this if you want us to have packaged alcohol available to you at this store? Now, on there, there are 10 pages, there are 50 pages with about 10 signatures on them. I looked through them, some of them have double names on it, people signed twice. I'm looking at this, and I'm going, okay, at best, and I think Ms. Clark might have talked with you about this before, at best, there's about 400 true signatures on there that I would say, these are people in the area. Now, I analyzed this, and I thought this was a fascinating point. Of the 208 people who actually took the time to put their ZIP code on their petition next to their name, 181 of those live in that direct area of the 89130, 89131, 89143, and 89149 area, which is that exact area where you're talking about, where the Walgreens is located. That is, over 87% of the people who left their ZIP code on there said, yes, we approve to have Walgreens have the opportunity to sell packaged alcohol. We've also spoken with Councilman Ross on this, our office has, and we've been informed that Councilman Ross also approves this Walgreens having the opportunity to sell packaged liquor. We're simply asking, follow staff's recommendation. All Walgreens ask is to have the opportunity to compete with the Albertsons, with the Fresh &amp; Easy, with the 7-Eleven, with the gas station, and we're only asking for using 50 square feet, less than 1% of our own square footage for the packaged alcohol. If you have any questions, I'm an open book to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval on item 16, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 16 carries.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
I'm going to go out of sequence, and I'm going to pull forward items number 27 and 28, which are both related. Beginning with item number 27 is WVR 54398. The applicant is Wolf TH LLC. The owner is James R. Marsh. For possible action on request for a waiver of the Town Center sign standards to allow a pylon sign to advertise one tenant where multiple tenants are required, and to allow a 73-foot-tall flagpole where 40 feet is the maximum height allowed at 6775 North Durango Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 28 is WVR 54400. For possible action on a request for a waiver of the Town Center development standards to allow nine parking lot trees where a minimum 10 trees are required, and to allow 12-foot-tall Mexican fan palms where a combination of 36-inch box Rio Grande ash trees and 25-foot-tall tall Mexican fan palms are required in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the purpose of standardized streetscapes within a special area plan is to create a sense of place through the establishment of a strong identity and character. Jacent developments along Durango Drive have complied with the Town Center streetscape standards, and as a result, have begun to identify themselves from the undefined spaces around them. The proposed parking lot and streetscape revisions to the previously approved landscape plan failed to comply with the standards found within Town Center Development Standards Manual and will detract from the Town Center identity. The applicant has also requested a waiver of the Town Center sign standards to allow a pylon sign for the sole purpose of the convenience store slash gas station where such is not allowed, and to allow a flagpole to be 45% taller than the allowable 40-foot requirement. Staff cannot support the applicant's ad hoc revisions to the streetscape landscaping, as well as their request for preferential signage. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested waivers. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you very much, and first of all, thank you very much for calling us forward. My comments are going to be brief, because Greg, being the technical whiz that he is, can discuss the waivers in more detail. There's one thing I want to say for the record. We've talked with Councilman Ross about this project, and he really is a class act. And let me tell you why. He did not want this to go here. He did not want this, in the worst way, to go here, and he fought that it not go here. But it got approved. That being said, he put that behind him, and he said, I want this to be successful now. I want this to be done right. I want it to work for the applicant. The waivers that we're talking about here are designed for that specific purpose, is to make this work in the best possible way it can. And so with that understanding in place, we can talk about the two waivers, first being the sign waiver and the flag waiver, and then we'll talk about the landscaping. We have made arrangements with Councilman Ross, obviously subject to your approval. That's his recommendation, but it's obviously what you folks think that counts here. So we appreciate that very much. But we have, he's had, he's asked us to amend a condition in a couple of ways, and we're going to do that. So, thank you. Mr. Borghel?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Greg Borghel, 300 South Fourth Street, here for the applicant. On the sign and flagpole issue, I think we can fairly characterize them as technical waivers as opposed to substantive waivers. The ARCO sign that is proposed, are we getting that on the exhibit? If we could perhaps focus here, it would be helpful, is a 24-foot sign. 24 feet is the allowed height in the district. However, it's supposed to serve more than one commercial activity within the overall center. There is, at this point, only one commercial activity in the center. Mr. Marsh has not come up with a development plan for the south half of the center. So this is a sign that is at the allowed height, and its waiver is to allow it to only advertise one tenant on the property, which is all that we have. Subsequent tenants may come in, and they will have to live with signage of whatever character this board approves, and if it's monument signs, and Mr. Marsh is acceptable to that, since he signed the application, for this to be the only sign, we think that that's appropriate. It's not over height, it is simply that it is a single-tenant sign. Secondarily, with respect to the flagpole, your code allows the flag to be 40 feet above and abutting or adjacent freeway. This flag is 40 feet above the not-quite-abutting freeway at 215. There's a parcel in between. So we are at the 40-foot height that's allowed above 215, but we don't meet the adjacency standard, because there is a vacant parcel between us and them. However, as Mr. Kemper has explained, we've discussed this at length over time with the councilman and his office, in terms of what's reasonable to do the project. The councilman is aware of similar projects done by the same developer in the city, in his district, and believes that it's appropriate. We believe it's appropriate, we believe it's to scale, and we would point out that we're at a transitional area where the special plan, in one case, applies, whereas if you were across the street, it would not apply. And with regard to the single-purpose sign, I guess we think it's fair to point out that a competitor down the street, in a different technical area, has been allowed two 24-foot single-purpose signs. So we think we're well within the general character of the area. We think it's attractive. We believe, all our neighbors think it's attractive. They're anxious for us to get in there and be a success, as is the councilman's office, and we would hope that you would grant the waiver. We've not put out a story as to legal hardship, because this is not a variance. It's a waiver by which you can determine that the use is reasonable and appropriate. We hope you will do that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Were we doing both items? I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize.
I forgot.
My mistake. I kind of got ahead of you. You're split on the page with me. I apologize.
Okay, well, no, I think I'm the one who lost track. If I then should speak to the landscaping.
Please go.
Your condition number four on the if-approved list of staff was what the applicant applied for and would be perfectly acceptable. However, once again, we've been negotiating over time with the councilman's office, and we've spoken to some of you, and we want to offer a better condition than your condition number four on the landscaping waiver. We would now ask that that, condition four, read, "A waiver from the Town Center Development Standards, Section C, is hereby approved to allow 18-foot-tall Mexican fan palms, alternating with 36-inch box Rio Grande ash trees along the street frontages." That's an enhancement to both the size, number, and character of the landscaping. And again, we would hope that that meets with everyone's approval. We certainly were happy with the if-approved conditions, but we were asked to do better, and we've done better. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'll move on to public comment. Thank you. Anybody wish to be heard on this? Sir, come on up and state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Peter Janney. I live at 6872 Deer Isles in Las Vegas. I probably go by that lot four, five, six times a day. I'm very concerned about lowering the standards along the Durango, because this would set a precedent for other developers to, in specific about the landscaping, would allow other developers to cut the corner on it. Right now, the street looks really nice, and I don't think anybody should be allowed to get a waiver for that. Secondly, the one thing that wasn't brought up, but that I read in the report, is on the pylon sign, which I don't really have an objection to, is the one-foot setback. I'm very concerned about sightlines coming down Deer Springs to turn onto Durango. It appears it's going to be very close to that corner, and one foot is not adequate in my mind with the way it's going to block the view of Durango. And on the flagpole, that flagpole, I suspect, will be even taller than the hospital up there. It will be the tallest structure in the area. I think it is out of proportion to the location, and it's not abutting the freeway. And I saw one of the arguments was, well, we want people to see it from the freeway, but in reality, 215 is not a long-haul route where people are looking for gas stations. It's a commuter route for people that live in the area, and they already know where they're going to go buy gas 90% of the time. So with all that said, I like some of what they're doing, but it needs some improvement. It's trying to cut corners. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
I have a few comments, Mr. Chair. First, I appreciate the comments that were made. The setback is not one of the issues in front of us. I think the sign's in full compliance there. I understand the single-tenant sign makes sense to me, no issues with that. Frankly, I love these tall flagpoles, and I know we have to be careful. Can you tell me what the applicant plans to do with the flag? How long is it going to be up? How are we going to take care of that?
I can, Commissioner. If you don't mind, I'd like to also respond to the first two points that were raised. Is that acceptable?
Yes, please, if you would through the chair.
Sure. Do you mind, Mr. Chairman? First of all, on the one-foot setback the gentleman brings up, this occurs only because of the excess 54-foot radius at the corner of these two section-lined roads. So the setback from the road will be ample and clear the sight zone. It's this artificial property line that cuts the 54-foot radius that is, in fact, not where the street is. So that's an artificiality. Secondly, on his landscaping question, I realize he can't track the details we pointed out, but our amended condition on the landscaping, in fact, brings it into conformance with the rest of the Durango frontage. So he, as it turns out, agreed with the councilman, and we've been asked to change, and we've changed. Lastly, to the point you raised about the flag. First of all, he will use two flags, as he does at his other establishments. On calm days, he has a very large flag, which is displayed, and on windy days, he has a smaller flag. That's done for two reasons. That's done to eliminate any question of flapping noises that might be out of line, and also to protect a very expensive mall. and also to protect a very expensive multi-thousand-dollar flag, or the larger one. Secondly, the applicant here has agreed, in response to issues that were raised, as we've discussed this with people, his pole will be internally mechanized, so the flag will go up with an internal mechanism, so there'll be no clanking or other disturbance of people with the mechanism. And the flag location is far to the south on the property, as far as possible away from residential. Although, since it will make no noise, we think there will not be any residential impact. How does he use it? It would typically be up and lighted in accordance with the national standards for flags, twenty-four hours a day. But again, not when it's raining, and when it's windy, he would use the smaller flag that's roughly the size that you have here, and a larger flag when it's not windy.
Thank you. Would the applicant, would it be possible to put an administrative review on this, just to bring it back in a year's time, to make sure we're not having problems with neighbors? I know we've had issues before in front of this commission with flags, and I just want to make sure we don't have any problems.
And what would the purpose of the administrative review be? Would you ask them to take it down if it was making too much noise?
I don't think we'd ask them to take it down. We could just say, you know, "You represented that you would use a smaller flag, if you could pay closer attention to that."
Okay.
And we could get some input from the neighbors if that turned into a problem.
If that was addressed to us, we don't mind a review, but I think you were looking at staff.
I was.
I don't believe that there would be any issue with putting an administrative review on the waiver, just to verify that they're in compliance with the conditions.
All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, so I understand that if administratively they find there's not an issue, then you don't see it again? Is that how it works? And if there is an issue, then they bring it back?
Mr. Chairman, to address that question, if there is no issue, then staff administratively approves that review, and that's basically the end of that. If there are issues with the review, then we do bring it back for a public hearing.
And candidly, Commissioner, if we're having issues, we ought to correct them. So we don't have a problem with that at all.
Exactly. All right. Thank you. You're going to see my support on both of these. I think we can maintain the streetscape with regard to both waivers, and I appreciate the amended condition. You know, we're just slightly smaller than what's required on the Mexican fan palm trees, and those are such fast-growing trees anyway. You're going to be right there within a matter of a few years, so you'll see my support on both of these.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Through you, a question for the applicant on item number twenty-eight. You have a waiver for the Town Center Development Standards to allow nine parking lot trees, where a minimum of ten trees are required. However, I'm looking at your plan, and it looks like you are providing ten trees. I'm trying to find out why you're seeking that waiver.
We actually did not seek it. The staff determined that it was required. It could be because of the location of the trees. We were required to move one tree because of a fire department requirement to create separation from the LPG dispenser. And so it could be that moving that tree got it out of the parking lot, and therefore there's only nine in the parking lot instead of ten. We didn't challenge that. The staff didn't feel the change was inappropriate, and didn't bring it up as an issue. So I think we're hoping you'll approve it as written by staff.
Okay. I'm still counting ten, so unless you change the plan from this time, I don't see a big issue with that. It seems like you have tons of landscaping all the way around this property, and with the added condition of going back with the eighteen-foot-tall palms, I don't really have any issues with this, and you'll see my support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Director?
I was just going to add that it's a locational issue in terms of where the trees are placed. While they do have the correct number of trees, there's an area where they don't have adequate trees for the number of parking spaces, and so that's the reason for the waiver.
Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
And I do have one more comment, Mr. Chair. And the question was, so what are we going to do if they come back and they're not meeting that requirement? Make them tear it down? And we always look at that. Yes, make them tear it down. If they're leaving up the thirty-five-foot flag at midnight on a night where it's forty mile-per-hour wind, I mean, we basically put these conditions in place, and everybody comes up, and they make these representations. We like for people to stick behind what they say when they come up here, and not think that it's a thirty, or sixty, or ninety-day condition, or whatever we say today doesn't matter in ninety days. I see it all the time, and it gets pretty frustrating.
You know, if I could just chime in on that, you know, I'm having flashbacks of another flag we had on Sahara. So the best advice would be that if you think it's going to be a problem, don't grant it, because there's really not going to be a lot you can do if they're not... And code enforcement won't be out there every night when it's raining, when it's windy, to determine whether or not the big flag is out, whether it's lit properly, that kind of thing. So it's really going to be dependent upon the neighbors to make a complaint about it. So the administrative review, while it does kind of bring them back before, at least before staff, I'm not sure there's going to be a lot you can do once it's up and built.
Mr. Chairman, one more comment.
Certainly.
And not to go back and forth, but if what we do up here doesn't have any teeth, we got to take chances on certain applicants that come to us. But if what we do doesn't have any teeth, and the city attorney and the code enforcement can't go after them and hold them to these conditions, you know, then we have internal issues.
I don't know if it's an internal issue, it's just the fact that, like I said, if it's nighttime, rainy, windy, I mean, code enforcement can't be out there twenty-four-seventy. So it'll just have to be, we'll have to rely on the applicant to do what they say.
Mr. Chairman, can I join the conversation?
No, I'm just going to let these two finish, and I'm going to ask if any other commissioners want to be heard on this. And saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding item twenty-seven, the motion is for approval with the additional condition of the administrative review.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Director?
Just to clarify that condition, so that we have it accurately in the record, the request is for an administrative review in one year of the flag pole?
That is correct, and I believe the applicant has agreed to that.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve item number twenty-seven carries.
Regarding item twenty-eight, the motion is also for approval, subject to conditions with the amended condition number four. Instead of the twelve-foot-tall Mexican fan palms, they will be eighteen-foot-tall Mexican fan palms.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We also volunteered adding the ash trees at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve item number twenty-eight carries.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, if I might, I would invite staff that if you do get any issues from any neighbors at any time, both Mr. Borgell and I are available to jump on it right away, because I agree with the Commissioner. We have a condition, we agreed to it, we'll honor it, and if we don't, we ought to be chastised for it. And if he's listening or watching, I'd like Dick to know that we're thinking about him. So, Commissioner, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
And we thank you for taking us out of order. We're caught on a Tuesday that everybody's meeting in other places. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Okay, now we'll go back on track to item number seventeen, which is MOD 54816. The applicant owner is Ryan O'Neal, for possible action on a request for a major modification of the Town Center Land Use Plan from SXTC Suburban Mixed Use Town Center and SCTC Service Commercial Town Center to GCTC General Commercial Town Center at 7610 Osoblanca Road and Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested major modification would match the land use designation to the south and further serve as a major retail corridor for the residential property to the west. Staff, therefore, recommends approval of the request, as the proposed change is a logical extension of the existing general commercial town center land use designation to the south, and is in line with the goals and objectives of the Town Center Development Standards Manual. Please note that an additional letter of protest has been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please? If you'll state your names and addresses, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Genzer, Genzer Consulting, Las Vegas, Nevada. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Ryan O'Neal, who is also the property owner and here to my left, there's really not a lot to add to what staff just reported. This is a straight change of land use type from SXTC to GCTC, which will match the property to the south. Mr. O'Neal purchased this property in June, knowing that it was going to be a rather difficult property to develop. As you can see on the map that is currently on the screen, the off-ramp from the ninety-five cuts off the easterly portion of the property, so that is really not developable in any form. So what we think we will be left with is approximately one acre. And under the SXTC, the range of uses that are allowed simply just do not fit this property. The only other thing I would add is that at one time, there was an approved retail building on this property that was actually part of a larger proposal, which included the property to the south. So at that time, it was probably a little easier to think about what you might be able to put there, because they had the ability to, as an example, put parking across the entire site. With what will be left with this property, it's all going to have to be exactly to the size that we have. So we're asking for the GCTC to allow the range of uses to be expanded, and we would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Did you like to be heard, sir?
No, sir.
Would any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Regarding item seventeen, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number seventeen carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the September seventeenth City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a good night. Moving on now to item number eighteen, which is ZON 54561. The applicant is Amy Pan. The owner is Santa Gold Realty LLC. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from PR Professional Office and Parking to C1 Limited Commercial at 1704 and 1710 Santa Paula Drive in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the existing professional office and parking zoning district is designed to be a transitional zone to allow low-intensity administrative and professional offices characterized by low volumes of direct daily client and customer contact. The goal of the district is to allow for office uses in an area which is predominantly residential. The office uses typically permitted in a PR zoning district require less parking and vehicle trips than the more intense uses allowed in a C1 zoning district. For these reasons, the existing PR professional office and parking zoning district is more appropriate, as it provides a better transition from the residential zone properties to the south and east. As such, staff recommends denial. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please? And ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please?
My name is Amy Pan. Address is 1710 Santa Paula and 1704 Santa Paula. The reason I submit the application, because both properties have been vacant for the past three years. So I would like to, that's why I just tried to see there is more options if I can have different development on that property, or also bring up the neighborhood value, and also, because in that neighborhood, there are more residential properties than the commercial property. Also, on the west of the property is a commercial store. And on the north side of the property, also a couple, a seven-eleven convenience store. So I believe in that location, if we can rejoin into a commercial, there will be a more opportunity to develop. But also, I spoke to Councilman Bob on the phone. He actually recommend, so that's why I don't have any more paperwork as I planned today, because he said not to do any more work on this, because he don't see that, he don't see the approval from the chairman. So, but I have an appointment with him on Monday, so probably there may be more work for me to do in order to have further action from me, maybe appeal. But I understand that denial is recommended.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? And if you can line up, we do have more than one mic.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pam Hartley, and I live at 1700 Rexford Drive, which is one block from this. I've lived in the neighborhood for fifty years, and I've been active in the neighborhood associations for the last twelve. And one of the issues that we have consistently objected to is commercial encroachment in our neighborhood. So I'm opposed to it. It's within one block of my co-op, and I don't want to see any further commercial encroachment in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, state your name and address, please.
Of course. My name is John Delikanakis. I live at 548 Barber Way, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89104, and have lived in the neighborhood for some time. I am also opposed to this application for rezoning. It's incompatible with the surrounding residential nature of the neighborhood. I sympathize with Ms. Pan. I'm sure she'd like to do many things with the property, and perhaps between Bob Coffin, Councilman Coffin, and perhaps some of the neighbors, we could give her some ideas that would be more compatible with the neighborhood, and we certainly invite that. But a commercial zoning is out of the question, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Yes, Jack Levine, 1818 Eighth Place. And I'm one of the original founders of the South Ridge and the Beverly Green Neighborhood Associations, and we have adamantly opposed commercial encroachment into the historic downtown neighborhoods. We're working very hard to achieve historic designation for some of these neighborhoods, and we believe the commercial encroachment is just a slippery slope. Once somebody has it, the next person wants it, and the next person wants it, too. It does not help build up strong, healthy, safe neighborhoods, and that's what we're working very hard to achieve. I recommend that you vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Steve Evans, 1705 Cochran Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. I, too, here am in opposition to this zone change from office and residential to limited commercial. Most of you know that I kind of keep an eye on this neighborhood, and these folks are my neighbors. When this application first came forward, the social media and Facebook was just blown up with people aghast at the fact that this could be commercial. I agree with Mr. Delikanakis, and Pam, and Jack Levine as well. This creeps into a neighborhood. It's spot zoning. It's really somewhat inappropriate, I think. It's too intense. The staff report speaks for itself, and I think is compelling. Congratulations for the staff for analyzing that and doing it so well. I would say, though, that the other interesting thing about this application is that it didn't come with an accompanying site plan. And most of you know, when I was in the high chair, it was difficult to approve a zone change without an accompanying site plan. We have no idea what's going to go there. In the applicant's justification letter, she talks about a possible RV park or mini-storage. And Ms. Pam, I would encourage you to read the goals and objectives of the redevelopment effort. It probably wouldn't include an RV park or mini-storage. There's a lot of opportunities there, and I strongly suggest that you reach out to those neighbors. In my opinion, we need rooftops downtown. It'd be a great place for a good residential product. So you may want to reach out, and I would suggest, when you come forward with a plan, have a zone change, I mean, have a site plan, because we have no clue what's going to go in there. And without a site plan, it smells like a flip to me. That may not be the case, but we don't know. So my strong suggestion is that you follow your own staff's recommendation for denial. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
And Director Fag, Godspeed to you. And Director Fag, Godspeed to you.
Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. Amy, I've looked into this, and I actually heard about this before the agenda ever hit my email, just because I, they put those little special use permit signs up all over the place on your property, and very, very active neighborhood. And Pam, Jack, John, Delikanakis, Steve, really active people in your neighborhood. You know, it, I think, I think they state it right, and I think staff states it right. Considering that that is a residential area, we're trying to transition from the hard, or the, the commercial properties into residential. And right now, with that professional office that you have, it provides a buffer and a nice transition in there. And with the mini storage or RV, you threw a couple of things in there. And I know you don't know what you want to do with that property. But it's, it's just kind of hard to look at changing the zoning in a particular area without having a game plan. But I think you're going to be hard pressed to ever change the zoning on this to a C1. I think professional office or residential is the best you're going to get.
So actually, I did talk to the Craig, the staff at City about rezoning to residential, but he, because that general plan on the area is strong as C. So he doesn't think that's going to happen, because I, you know, I was going to actually rezonate to residential or, or commercial. Like, like you guys can see, I really, I don't know what I'm going to do yet in the area. But I appreciate all these neighbors' input. I'll just, you know, work with the councilmen to see what I can actually bring in that neighborhood to make the, everybody happy, I guess. I understand that this is just like, I just want to try to submit application to see what happens. If it does, I, I wasn't expecting this to be approved in the beginning, but however, that will give me opportunity to work with everybody here to see what exactly is the best fit to, to be built in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, also, just one more comment. And, and I would recommend, before you bring any other action on this property, I would definitely reach out to the planning department, see what they say, and, and reach out to Councilman Coffin, because he has his hand on the pulse for that neighborhood, and he knows, he has the whole, all the neighbors' ears over there, so he can pretty much tell you what, what the, if you're going to get neighborhood support or not.
Yes, absolutely. Actually, he, that's why he called me. He said he should, I should have talked to him before submitting the application, but it's already been done, so that's okay. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Goyens.
I, just for the applicant, I know she keeps saying she's going to talk to the, to the councilman, but I think you may, you know, just like a former Commissioner Evans said, you know, it went out on social media. I think if you, you know, if you just reach out to this neighborhood and maybe go sit and have a cup of coffee with a group of them, I'm sure you'll get a plethora of ideas that will be compatible in the area. But I just certainly can't see putting C1, two, two houses, two residential houses in on a street. So just sit down and talk to them.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea. Okay.
Mr. Evans loves hot dogs, too.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard?
Yeah, I, I think the applicant may have some choices to make tonight. If, if she agrees to, ma'am, you may want to step up. You have some choices tonight, based on the way you see this going. If you choose to obey the item, it kind of holds it in limbo, so that you can make some decisions about what you want to do. If we deny it, it's one year before you can bring it back in front of this planning commission. If you withdraw it, you're not limited to the one year, but you would have to, to pay a new fee. So I, Commissioner Schlotman, I don't know if you have any feelings one way or another. Through you, Mr. Chair, but just wanted to make that clear. The city attorney pointed that out.
Right, Commissioner Schlotman?
Yeah, that's, withdraw may be a better option at this point.
Just a minute, ma'am. I want to let the commissioners address each other right now.
I, I don't see any need in obeying this item, because our opinions won't change by the next month. Withdrawing the application, I'm fine with, or voting and seeing where it goes, but I think we know where it's going to go. But if she just wants to withdraw the application, that's, that would be fine with me as well.
And Chairman, that would be without prejudice if she wants to reapply?
That's correct.
So I just, do I have to do anything to withdraw the application, or is it?
Would you like to withdraw your application, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Schlotman?
Let's just make it clear for the record that your request is to withdraw without prejudice.
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
And you understand what without prejudice means?
No appeal, right?
It means you can bring it back in the future, meaning you're not precluded from doing this again.
Okay, so I don't have the one-year limitation?
You'll have to bring it with a brand-new application.
Gotcha. Oh, that's fine. The fee, I understand.
Commissioner?
So I guess there's going to be a...
Okay, I don't believe a vote is necessary, and the, your application, by your own, by your own volition, is being withdrawn. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm sorry, Chair. A vote is needed. To strike it would require no vote, but withdrawal without prejudice requires a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Chairman, on item number eighteen, ZON five four five six one, I would make a motion to strike, motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to withdraw without prejudice carries on item number eighteen. Going on now to related items nineteen and twenty, beginning with item number nineteen, which is VAR five five zero two six. The applicant is Elite Media. The owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a ninety-two-foot-tall off-premise sign where seventy-five feet is the maximum height allowed at thirty-one hundred Stewart Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty is SUP five four eight two eight. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed off-premise sign in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman? Brian down here. Is number twenty-three also part of this, or is this?
No, items number tw- twenty-one and twenty-two were, but they've been withdrawn, and then item number twenty-three is its own item. Staff, may we have a report on items nineteen and twenty?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is applying for a special use permit to install an off-premise sign at the city detention center at thirty-one hundred Stewart Avenue. The proposed off-premise sign would be the second at the subject site. The sign meets all minimum code requirements with the exception of overall height. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the sign to be ninety-two feet tall with a maximum height allowed of seventy-five feet. The sign would be located adjacent to an elevated freeway and its accompanying twenty-foot-tall sound wall. The additional height is necessary to achieve full sign visibility from the freeway. Therefore, staff supports the variance request and associated special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please? Good evening.
Hi, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Marian Perry. I'm with the law firm Ballard Spar, one hundred City Parkway, Suite seventeen fifty, and I represent the applicant, Elite Media. The City of Las Vegas has been partnering with Elite Media, and they recently held a lighting ceremony for the first of the parkeys that have been installed pursuant to the parkey agreement between the city and Elite that came as a result of an RFP for city-sponsored, or for city advertising. The parkey agreement provides that any revenue from the parkeys will be shared with the City of Las Vegas, and the city has the opportunity to place city-related advertising at no cost on the signs. After a careful site review and analysis with the city and with the, the council office, we have identified what we call PY seven on this property, and that is right here, and is the one that, that we're discussing. The site is home to an existing sign. The parcel's northern property line really makes it an ideal location for a parkey. It has excellent visibility, and it meets the distance separation requirements from the nearest residential, which would be to the east of the property, which is actually closer to the existing sign that was referenced. And then the nearest, the next nearest residential actually isn't on the map. It's skipped over. This is, this would be inside the detention, the detention center's western wall, and it will have a face that's identical to the existing, the existing sign. It, we are proposing it to be constructed at a height of ninety-two feet, and have requested a, a variance because of the long and narrow shape of the parcel and the curve of the freeway. There are extraordinary circumstances that make it impractical to construct a parkey that can be seen at this location at the, at the seventy-five feet that would be permitted under the use permit. In order to determine the ninety-two feet, we retained Jones Media to go out and actually take a crane up, pin a, pin a site, and see at what point it could be seen from the all-important right-hand read, and they came back with an analysis of ninety-two feet. The approval of additional height at this location will have no detrimental impact on any residences, and the, the ordinance in question already contemplates the increase in a sign in, if the sound wall is constructed later, to allow greater visibility or for it to be moved around a little bit, and it's consistent with the purpose and intent of this. And staff agrees that a variance is appropriate under the circumstances. Elite looks forward to expanding upon its relationship with the city, and we respectfully request that you follow staff's recommendation of approval. I do have representative of Elite Media and Yesco here, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item, or these items? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. So is nineteen and twenty both about PY seven, or is it PY seven and PY eight?
Chairman, through you. It is, they're both PY seven. One is for the actual location of the sign, a special use permit, and the second is for the increase in height.
And Chairman, through you, the PY eight has been removed from this?
Yes.
Okay. And is there another sign coming up, independent?
If, if you'd like me to address...
Well, and, Mr. Chairman, the only reason why I ask, there's only this one sign at this location. There might be a different app about a different location, but this is the only thing at this one site here today, right?
Are you talking about item number twenty-three by chance?
I don't know. There's a lot of babe, so is it twenty-three? Is that...
It's, there's two, there are two separate signs at the same address.
Okay.
So right now, we're on items nineteen and twenty.
And this particular sign, PY seven is at Stewart and Mojave, I mean, Stewart, Stewart and the ninety-five.
And Mojave.
And Mojave.
Mojave and the ninety-five.
Okay.
So Stewart, Mojave, ninety-five, ninety-three.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I, I met with applicant, actually didn't meet with applicant. I actually just had opportunity to speak to the applicant on the phone earlier, as we're talking about certain signs being removed from this particular application. So at the end of the day, I like the sign. I think it's a better-looking billboard than most billboards that are out there. The only problem I have is, which isn't the worst thing, but, or isn't a dull killer, but I get concerned about these LEDs all the time. I feel a little bit more comfortable about this LED, considering it is on NDOT right-of-way, or fronting NDOT right-of-way, and it's a partnership with the city, where the city can, you know, verify the brightness, and NDOT would, would be regulating you on this if you're blind in cars. But I sure would like the city to look into, look into these LEDs, and it'd be nice to not spend a million dollars, but to do a brief study to, to see what kind of impact these signs have when, when they flash, or when they're, it has a darker background message and it flashes bright. Because driving up and down Charleston and Las Vegas Boulevard, and I can name about ten of them that'll blind you if you're going down the street. So seeing that, we'll see what my other commissioners have to say.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just respond to Commissioner Schlotman's concerns about the LED signs and brightness. On our work plan for the Department of Planning for the next year, we do have one item to bring forward, a text amendment to address LED signage, not only off-premise signs, but on-premise signs as well, as that has been a concern that's been raised in previous planning commission hearings. So we will have something that we will bring forward to you to review and discuss. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain motions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number nineteen, VAR five five zero two six, I'll make a recommendation to follow staff's, sorry, make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item nineteen carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, on item number twenty, SUP five four eight two eight, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item number twenty carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Going on now to item number twenty-three is VAR five five zero two eight. The applicant is Elite Media. The owner is City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a ninety-two-foot-tall off-premise sign where seventy-five feet is the maximum height allowed at thirty-one hundred Stewart Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to amend a previously approved off-premise sign to raise the height from seventy-five feet to ninety-two feet at the city detention center at thirty-one hundred Stewart Avenue. The existing seventy-five-foot-tall off-premise sign is located adjacent to an elevated freeway, and it's accompanying twenty-foot sound wall. The additional height is necessary to achieve full sign visibility from the freeway. Therefore, staff supports the request. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
For the record again, Marian Perry, one hundred City Parkway, Suite seventeen fifty, representing Elite Media. I will briefly repeat just the variance justification, since this is similar to the variance that was just approved. The approval of additional height at this location will not have a detrimental impact on any residential, any, any residences in the area. The, we have, we haven't heard any complaints about the existing sign, and if you have the opportunity to drive by going east, be careful, because if you try to find the sign, it might be a little difficult. This, oh, sorry, that's, but this is for the existing sign, and the additional height will allow it to be seen as you come around the curve, which is just a different circumstance at this site that, that wasn't, that wasn't present at the other sites where parkeys were being constructed. Just because it came up in the last hearing, I, I did, since the, since the original conversation I had with Commissioner Schlotman, find out that there is actually a regulator on this sign that stops it from going above the three hundred nits that the city requested, and is in the parkey agreement that we have with the city. Not only do we have to follow code, we have to follow the agreement, and the agreement states that we follow the three hundred nits, or comply with state or federal rules if they become more restrictive. So there is actually a regulator installed, and it can't go higher than that.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners, or a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just invited the city attorney down here. Forgot to disclose, I do work for a company, Urban Lofts, who owns that property across the street. They currently are not building on it, don't have any intentions of building on it for the next four or five years, so who knows if they'll ever build on that property, but it has absolutely zero impact and zero financial impact on myself. So we'll disclose about the last one and this particular item coming up.
Thank you, Commissioner. All entertain a motion?
Yes, Chairman, on item number twenty-three, VAR five five zero two eight, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item twenty-three carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is also final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much. We do, you know, normally, we like to express how... And we do, you know, normally, we like to express how much we appreciate staff's assistance here, but because it was a partnership with the city, they put in a lot of extra time on this, and we certainly appreciate all that.
Thank you. Have a good night. Item number twenty-four is VAR 53657. The applicant is Eric Martonovich. Owner is BCNV LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow two existing accessory structures, Class Two, to be sixteen feet and thirty-seven feet in height where ten feet six inches is the maximum height allowed at five-six-three-six Donald Road in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to address a citation issued by code enforcement for excessive accessory structure height at five-six-three-six Donald Road. The applicant constructed a sixteen-foot-tall and a thirty-seven-foot-tall horse-training apparatus that exceed the height of the main dwelling unit. The horse-training apparatuses were constructed without proper building permits. The proposed accessory structures meet all other Title Nineteen requirements regarding location setbacks and building area. However, the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances that would justify the request. Therefore, staff recommends denial. Additional letters of support and protest have been received after publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant? And sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Eric Martonovich, fifty-six thirty-six Donald Road, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-three-one. I have no idea what I'm doing. We're acrobats, and me and the other people in the household, and we built this as something for us, too. It's what we do. It's how, you know, it's part of how we, what we do with our lives. And it's just a training way for us to train, just like if someone wanted to build a gym in their house or, I don't know, a dirt bike ramp or anything else. This is just how we, this is something that we need to do, what we do with our life. As far as the neighborhood goes, we have a ton of support. The kids around the neighborhood come and watch us all the time. Families thank us for being there a lot. As far as it being messing up the neighborhood, there's six other telephone poles. They're the same height. They're already on my property, along with multiple telephone poles going up and down every street. So the heights, it's basically the same as all the poles that are already on-premise. I'm really not sure what I'm doing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Can I ask the applicant, have you had a neighborhood meeting? Have you spoken? I know you said you've talked with the neighbors. You have kids that come over. Have you actually held a neighborhood meeting and invited neighbors to come in and sit down and tell you how they feel?
Not officially. They come up to me all the time and talk. I invite the neighbors over when we do practices sometimes. They come over just to, and, you know, they show up with their kids and whatever and hang out and watch us. I haven't done an official meeting. We did go around and get, ask, when this all happened, we went around and asked people to sign if they were cool with it. And got forty-some-odd signatures from just our immediate neighbor.
Did you submit that?
Yes. It was submitted with all the other stuff that they asked us to submit.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I mean, I submitted it along with all of the, I don't know, all the stuff that I was asked to submit.
Well, I have a request for you. Rather than vote on this tonight, I'd like your agreement to obey it for thirty or sixty days to give you a chance to go back and have a neighborhood meeting and let me and/or staff attend that meeting just to get some input from the neighbors. I'd like to know, you know, what they think about this and to see if, you know, if there are any that feel strongly about it, maybe there's some type of compromise. So my request would be that you agree to an abeyance and bring this back in front of us after you hold that neighborhood meeting. Is that something you'd be willing to do?
Yeah. My only request is that you give me a little time. I'm currently on the road touring.
Okay.
So...
How long do you need?
I don't know. The more time you give me, the easier it'll be, kind of. You know, I had to fly in from Austin, Texas today to...
How about sixty days? We'll give you sixty days. That'll give you plenty of time to put out a notice for a neighborhood meeting, and I'd like to attend that.
Okay. And how do I go about?
Planning will get with you, and they'll tell you exactly what you need to do.
Okay.
All right. Then with the applicant's approval, are there any other comments through the chair?
I think when it comes back, I'll support it, too. I mean, I live out in this area and know the nature of it, and I think you're in the proper place to do what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With the applicant's approval, my motion is going to be to obey item twenty-four for sixty days or until the October Planning Commission meeting. What is that, that date? So that will be until the October fourteen, twenty-fourteen Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve this matter to the October fourteen, twenty-fourteen Planning Commission meeting carries. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Going on now to item number twenty-five, which is VAR 54750. The applicant owner is Donner Two Thousand and Two Trust. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot rear yard setback where ten feet is required for a proposed five-hundred-and-forty-square-foot accessory structure, Class Two poolhouse at three-zero-two-zero Campbell Circle in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I'm just going to go ahead and abstain on this item seeing as how I have ongoing business relationship with the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman.
Mr. Chairman, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to construct an accessory structure, Class Two, poolhouse in the required rear yard setback. Alternatively, the pool could be constructed with the required ten-foot rear yard setback as approved by the building permit, number two-six-zero-eight-one-nine, and in conformance with Title Nineteen requirements. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, is concluded the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature, and staff recommends denial of the variance. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Todd McPrayer with Brezlin Builders on five-five-two-five Polaris Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-one-eight, representing the applicant. Mr. Donner purchased this property in February of, earlier this year, and is doing some major remodeling to the house. And part of the development is to enhance the backyard feature. There's an existing swimming pool, and one of the features they want to add in there was a poolhouse. In doing so, we've looked at the backyard and the layout of the backyard and found it best that by constructing this poolhouse, five feet instead of ten feet as code's intent is, that we can then increase the usable area of the backyard. Rather than having ten feet behind the structure, we'll only have five feet. So looking at the exhibits here, so if we go to the overhead, looking at the color coding, basically, the way the house was built back in the seventies, it has a large front yard, and the house is centered on the property, meaning that the backyard is limited in space. In order to best use the facilities in the back, to have ten feet behind this building would just be ten feet of no man's land that collects, you know, leaves and trees and stuff like that, that wouldn't be of best use of the space. If you look at the enlargements here, you can see the ten-foot line is the red dashed line, and it would have an impact on the area that they could then have their kids play, entertain, while still, you'd have ten feet behind a building that you couldn't use. So the intent here is to reduce it down to five foot, put that other five feet back into the usable area of the yard, and to make it more common sense-driven. Along that line, part of the process when we submitted was to submit letters of the adjacent neighbors that are affected by this. And I assume that you have that in your backup. The two neighbors that were submitted is this neighbor here on Campbell Drive, as well as the other neighbor over on Campbell Circle, Mr. Hopper and Mr. Thompson, Thomas, I'm sorry. The one that's most affected is Mr. Hopper. And while I understand the intent of the code is to provide a buffer zone to adjacent backyards, if you look at the way that the house is situated, we actually butt up against his garage and an accessway to his backyard. So it's not directly affecting his backyard. It's actually the side of an existing garage that this building sets back against. So because of that, we don't find it as a hindrance to their property, plus they've provided their support for that. Finally, going through the neighborhood, the yellow dots on this map here, it's in the overhead, are other areas, whether they've been grandfathered in, whether they've been approved by this commission or the council, are areas that, from an aerial map and driving through the neighborhood, are identified as also having reduced setbacks. So it wouldn't be uncharacteristic for the neighborhood to have this. The building will be built to match, excuse me, the existing characteristics of the house that's currently being remodeled with the tile, the painted stucco, so that it would blend in also. And with that, I would entertain any questions and ask for your approval.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Good evening. This is a lovely project. It's a great street, and Mr. Donner's very lucky to have found such a beautiful piece of property that he's not only improving, but making neighbors on both sides of him happy. Being said, there's not much to say about it. The fact is, is that it's ideal for the neighborhood. It's ideal for his family. You know, you're following every step, every right, and you'll see my full support on this project tonight. This is my neighborhood. I did drive by it. I went through the circle, went through it yesterday. And when you have your consent of both neighbors on both sides, and nobody's complaining behind you, I certainly don't see any issue with this this evening.
Commissioner, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion for approval to follow staff's recommendation, I mean, to make a motion for approval on variance five-four-seven-five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item twenty-six carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, this will go on to the September seventeenth City Council meeting.
And, Mr. Chairman?
I thought we'd set this one up to be final action.
The request from the council was to have this item come forward.
Thank you.
And on that last vote, need to note the abstention of Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item number twenty-nine, which is WVR five-four-eight-two-four. This is a waiver for public hearing. Applicant is Robert Sina, owner Centennial Hills Mob Owners LLC. For possible action on a request for a waiver of the town center... Okay. I've been told it's Centennial Hills MOB Owners LLC, not Mob. For possible action on a request for a waiver of the town center development standard streetscape requirements to allow an alternative design at sixty-one hundred North Durango Drive in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the variance requested is the result of a self-imposed hardship as the applicant built the structure without the required building permits. The building permit review process would have highlighted the fact that the patio cover carport did not meet the required side yard setback.
I think we're both on wrong items. I think the chairman needs to read that.
We'll go ahead and stay on twenty-nine. We'll come back to twenty-six.
Throw me a curveball. All right.
Sorry about that.
All right, twenty-nine. An existing underground utility conduit runs adjacent to the North Durango Drive underneath the proposed streetscape amenity zone found at the back of curb to the landscape area and is preventing the installation of larger vegetation. The applicant has requested to relocate the required streetscape trees from the amenity zone to the landscaping buffer behind the sidewalk. The applicant has also requested to replace the required Rio Grande ash shade trees with a Chetapa accent tree. Staff has determined that the proposal to relocate the required amenity zone trees adjacent to North Durango Drive to the landscape buffer behind the sidewalk can be supported due to the existing site conditions. However, staff does not support the requested waiver to allow the accent trees in place of the required Rio Grande ash shade trees. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request with conditions. Thank you.
Michael Young, twelve Sandy Bunker, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-eight. We're, the group, I represent the owner. We, per Councilman Ross, this was the biggest eyesore in his ward. We put a group together that actually purchased the note, brought it back here, and have started and actually completed construction as of last Friday on this project. So the graffiti is gone, the windows are repaired, and the city signed off on the certificate of completion last Friday. The, with regard to the palm tree issue, very unfortunate, the, even before the previous development efforts, there were conduit that were put back of curb, which is where the twenty-four-foot fan palms were slated to be. So we couldn't, we couldn't put them there. The next best location was behind curb. And we recommend that you follow staff's approval there. With regard to the Chetapa trees replacing the Fan Texas ash or the Rio Grande ash, I brought some pictures. First of all, that's the picture of the Chetapa tree. Right across the street in the city's park is the Chetapa tree. The reason that we, other than following the city's lead, the reason that we decided to, we would like to change the tree type, as you can see, the Rio Grande ash is a very intrusive tree. And we support the town center plan, which is to bring the surrounding residents to the center commercial area. With this type of tree up against buildings that are along the street, it literally hides the buildings. If you go around the corner to the school, the trees literally hide the school on Tropical Parkway. It would be very detrimental to our project if the trees were to hide our project. We recommend that you give us approval on this.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's some discussion about whether the tree you showed was actually a fir or a palaverde. But regardless, I think based on the alternative design and because I believe we do have Chetapas on the other side of the street, you know, most of Durango is palm, ash, palm, ash. I understand what you want to do because of the alternative placement of the trees, and I think it's going to give your, the building, some better visibility. So you're going to see my support on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion regarding item twenty-nine is to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, there's a condition that's placed on, in the staff report, that denies the waiver of the replacement of the ash trees with the accent trees. So you may want to strike that condition or revise it to amend it to state that it's approved. And I'll give you one moment to bring up the condition number.
And I'll give you one moment to bring up the condition number. That would be condition number five. It currently reads a waiver from the town center development standards to allow Chetapa accent trees within the amenity zone instead of Rio Grande ash shade trees, which is required is denied. So I guess you can change the language to is approved. And that would accomplish your motion.
Does the director have a preference? Do we just strike or amend?
Amend is fine.
Okay. All right. So I'll renew my motion to approve item twenty-nine with the amended, the amended condition on condition five, allowing the Chetapa trees.
Thank you, Commissioner. And you accept those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Please vote. Motion to approve item number twenty-nine carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I apologize for this earlier. I skipped over item number twenty-six, which is VAR five four eight two zero. The applicant owner is Lori Nady Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where five feet is required for an existing patio cover at four five three zero Dover Place in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the variance requested is the result of self-imposed hardship as the applicant built the structure without the required building permits. Building permit review process would have highlighted the fact that the patio cover slash carport did not meet the minimum side yard setback before construction began. In summary, if the applicant had obtained building permits as required prior to construction, the issue would have been avoided. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, it's concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature and self-imposed, and staff recommends denial of the variance request. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. I'm Bill Curran with Ballard's Bar Law Firm, one hundred City Parkway, Suite seventeen fifty. I appear tonight on behalf of the applicant who bought this property in two thousand and eleven in very distressed condition. It had been occupied by squatters. It had been vacated. It had been occupied by squatters. Lots of harm had been done to the property, both inside and out, including even the perimeter wall. The landscaping was trashed. It was strewn with debris. My client bought it as a investment property. Fixed it up to a, to the point where today I think you could fairly describe it as being the nicest house in the neighborhood. He had some tenants that moved in that were very reputable and who said the only thing they didn't like about the house was there was no place really to sit outside in the shade. And he said, fine, I'll build you a shade structure, but he did so without the benefit of approvals from the city. He built it across into the driveway so there could be shade there. One neighbor who lives three houses away to the east lodged a complaint. I asked my client to scour the neighborhood and talk to the neighbors to see if they approved the improvements. I have put on your display board, if I could ask the operator to show it. My client is sort of a type A personality. When I said check with a few neighbors, he checked. He went several blocks in all directions. He has, I believe, sixty-five approvals. All the units that are shown in green there are people who approved. There's lots of rentals in the neighborhood. The protests, with the exception of the one who lives three houses to the east in a uncolored, it's sort of a blue color, but it doesn't show up very well on the monitor. He's the one who filed the protest. I have checked. There were three other protesters that submitted letters. One lives six blocks away. One lives two point seven miles away. And one lives four point nine miles away. I suspect they are property, they own rental property in the neighborhood and they didn't even block. They just figured anybody who wanted to do something that was required of variance, they were opposed to it. But I think the home is a, sort of a shining example of neighborhood rehabilitation. And anyhow, we have wide community support and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
I visited the neighborhood after speaking with your office, Mr. Curran, and I'm sorry that we played phone tag a few times this week, and I do appreciate you calling me. As you know, my councilwoman absolutely does not like zero setback of anything, but this is one of those cases where it absolutely is, it blends perfectly with the house. It's not a woods, a woods statue. Am I correct? It's the, it's
It's metal, yes.
Metal. And our concern always, of course, would be that if there was a fire, the fire would spread to the neighbor and on and on. And that would not happen here. You've got more than seventy supports on this. But I think what I love about this house is when you drive by it, you don't even notice it. It stands out. It's, it's, it's just a beautiful home. It's well maintained. I drove around to the back on Evergreen behind it, and you can't see it from there. And truly, when you drive by, you don't even notice it's an addition because it's been so well placed and so well done. And with that, you will see my, my motion for approval this evening, Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, to whoever makes the motion tonight on this. As many times in the past, we see these come before us and get approved, but then nothing ever happens, or sometimes they can, we can lose track of them. The only way that I could support this is if we modify condition number two where, that says all necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspections shall be completed in accordance to Title nineteen and all code as required by the Department of Building Safety within a hundred and eighty days.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll now entertain a motion.
So with that, I'm going to make a motion for approval on item variance five four eight two zero. Reminding us of what number? Of condition number two, which will be in place. And with that, I'll make the motion for approval this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item twenty-six carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the September seventeenth city council meeting with a recommendation of approval.
Moving on now to related items thirty and thirty-one, beginning with item number thirty, which is SUP five four seven eight eight. The applicant is Ovation Development. The owner is David and Jessica Livingston, Ed L. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a senior citizen apartment use with waivers to allow apartments on the ground floor where none are permitted. A primary resident or guest entryway in conjunction with the commercial uses and a front elevation that does not highlight the differences in uses at six seven zero five West Lone Mountain Road in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending approval. Related item thirty-one is SDR five four seven eight nine for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed three-story, sixty-unit senior citizen apartment complex with waivers to allow a zero-foot wide landscape buffer along the west perimeter and a four-foot wide buffer along a portion of the south perimeter where eight feet is required, and a four-foot wide buffer along the north perimeter where fifteen feet is required. Also in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to develop a second phase to the senior citizen apartment complex located in the parcel adjacent to the west. This project will be integrated into the existing complex and share amenities, parking, and cross-access. The lot is irregularly shaped and is a challenge to develop. Therefore, several waivers and exceptions are required. Staff supports the associated waivers due to the unique shape and location of the parcel and the fact that the project is being developed as a second phase of the adjacent project to the west. Given the infill nature and shape of the parcel, the proposed senior citizen apartment is ideal for the location. The development can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing surrounding land uses and will be an appropriate buffer between the existing multifamily residences to the south and the commercial properties to the north and east. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both applications. Additional letters of support and protest have been received after publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Audrey Aslan with Impulse Engineering, fifty-one thirty-five Camino Al Norte in North Las Vegas, representing the applicant. We are here to present the second phase of the Minuet Affordable Senior Apartment Complex. The proposed project is located on Lone Mountain, South Side, in between the existing Phase One Senior Affordable at Rainbow and Lone Mountain and the existing convenience store at Rancho and Lone Mountain, as you can see on the site plan. The one point two five acre parcel is Zone C one. We are proposing a three-story, sixty-unit interior corridor senior affordable apartment complex as a second phase of the well-received first phase. The existing Phase One is a hundred percent occupied. There are four hundred and sixty-one qualified applicants waiting for placement at this site. So this should indicate the need for such development. The zoning in place allows the type of development with a special use permit. We are asking for three waivers with the SUP. A waiver to allow apartments on the ground floor, a waiver to allow primary resident or guest entryway in conjunction with commercial uses, and a waiver to allow the front elevation to not highlight the difference in uses. I would like to point out that the proposed commercial uses would be limited to residents only. On the SDR, we are asking for two waivers and one exception. Those have to do with the landscape. Mostly the landscaping. So we have a waiver to allow the zero landscape buffer along the west perimeter. Along in here, we have parking that would serve the new building. And then also a four-foot buffer along the south perimeter where eight foot is required. And that would just be in this area right here. We do meet the buffering here, but not right here. Can you see it? I have my head in the way. And then we also are asking for a waiver, a waiver to allow the four-foot wide landscape buffer along the north perimeter where fifteen is required. And that is due to the inset of the bus turnout. We are also asking for an exception to allow five trees within the perimeter buffer along the west property line. That would be down in here. And then there's, there's landscaping throughout here, but this is the area that we're asking for the exception. We have reviewed the conditions for the SUP and SDR and would ask at this time if the SDR condition number ten could be removed as SDR nineteen should ensure that we meet the conditions of the joint access easements for Phase One and this proposed project. There is no intent to merge the parcels at this time. Each parcel is a separate LLC and have different lenders. Other than that, we concur with all the other conditions. It is our understanding that staff is recommending approval of both items, and we would respectfully request an approval of these two items tonight with item ten being removed. And I have also brought a few pictures of the existing Phase One as a representation of the quality development you can look forward to if approved. If you'd like to see those. And at this time, I would be open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Question for staff. The consolidation of lots, what was, is there a particular reasoning behind that? And that's all.
Through you, Chairman. The staff usually requests that there be a comprehensive development, being consolidated its parcels into one. Therefore, there wouldn't be any shared access agreements or anything like that. It would function as one. This particular site, condition number nineteen facilitates that without the mapping action because it asks for reciprocal access agreement. That's irrevocable, as well as the site was designed and reviewed as unto itself. So we're amenable to the removal of the mapping condition.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move for approval of item thirty, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item number thirty carries.
With respect to item thirty-one, also move to follow staff's recommendation for approval with the removal of condition ten.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item number thirty-one carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night. Item number thirty-two is SUP five four seven six six. The applicant is Smart and Final Properties One LLC. The owner is Charleston Vegas Number One LLC. For possible action on a request for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within a proposed thirty-six thousand eight hundred square foot general retail store other than listed with a waiver to allow a two hundred and forty-three foot distance separation from a house of worship where four hundred feet is required at four 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 zero East Charleston Boulevard in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor use will be located within a grocery store at forty-four forty East Charleston Boulevard. There is a distance separation waiver that accompanies this application to allow an alcohol use two hundred and forty-three feet from a house of worship. The religious facility should not be negatively impacted as the closest entrance is approximately eight hundred feet away from the proposed use. The proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the existing and future surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval. If approved, staff would recommend adding the following conditions. Number one, the sale of individual containers of any size beer or wine coolers is prohibited. All such products shall remain in their original configurations as shipped by the manufacturer. Further, the repackaging of containers into groups smaller than the original shipping container size shall be prohibited. Condition number two, the area dedicated to the sales of liquor shall be limited to two hundred and eighty-seven square feet of shelf area as illustrated within the date stamped floor plan of six twenty-five fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Pat Barber. I am Vice President of Real Estate with Smart and Final. I am here with a new owner-to-be, representatives of Rich Development who have the property under contract. A longstanding developer that I've known for many years, Bart Hollander and Tab Hunter are here, as well as Dan Adamson, the broker that's involved. In brief, we hope to open a supermarket here, a Smart and Final Extra, of which there are none in Las Vegas, but it's a supermarket. It's the store we've been opening since two thousand and seven. There are currently a hundred Smart and Final Extras, but none of them in Las Vegas. This is a revitalization of a very rundown center by Rich Development. We would be the major anchor in it. If you've seen it, you know what I mean. There would be new ownership in the center. They would be, of course, looking to revitalize the entire center over time once they have an anchor, namely us. The building is empty. It was formerly a Vons many years ago. It was operated briefly, I think, for three or four years as a laborio market. They filed bankruptcy and went out of business and closed all of their stores, most of which were in California. This is a supermarket. I realize you're not familiar with Smart and Final Extra, but it carries meat, full line of meat and produce and deli and dairy and frozen and grocery, about fifteen thousand stock keeping units in total. As you heard, this is here really because the property behind the shopping center, behind part of the shopping center includes a church. It faces Marion to the east. It is a very long distance, twelve hundred feet away from our store over to that street. But a part of their property does extend, a part of the property that's vacant, a large part part of their property does extend, a part of the property that's vacant, a large part of the property that's vacant, all over to the west so that the edge of that property is the distance that's been outlined here away from our store. Excuse me. A total of less than 5% of the store will be used for the sale of alcoholic beverages. As you know, all supermarkets carry all the departments you expect to find in a supermarket, including alcoholic beverages. Our customers expect to find it in our stores, and obviously, we don't want to chase them away because we don't carry one of the categories that people normally find in them. The staff, I believe, is, I think I heard, is recommending approval for it, and we have met with the councilman, and he did support it as well. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. I had the opportunity to meet with the applicant and a couple of the guys sitting out in the audience today, and they explained this, their project to me. I'm kind of excited about the Smart &amp; Final Extra, you know, with the produce and all the other items that you'll be carrying in that store. And, you know, when I was reading the staff's report, it actually says in Title 19 that the distance waiver is waivable if it's in a building that's over 20,000 square feet, and this one's 36,800. And this was a grocery store in the past, and so it's not like we're introducing something to this, into this area that wasn't there in the past. So I feel comfortable with this item. I do have a couple of questions. Are you, are you in agreement with staff's additional conditions?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, on Item Number 32, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval with the two added conditions. Do you want me to paraphrase them, or do you, would you like them read into the record?
Just to make sure that it's clear, Mr. Chairman, if we could have those read into the record just one more time. Mr. Kapavich, if you would do that for us, please.
Number one, the sale of individual containers of any size beer or wine coolers is prohibited. All such products shall remain in their original configurations as shipped by the manufacturer. Further, the repackaging of containers into groups smaller than the original shipping container size shall be prohibited. Number two, the area dedicated to the sales of liquor shall be limited to 287 square feet of shelf area, as illustrated within the 62514 date stamped floor plan.
And, Mr. Chairman, one other comment. I did point out to the applicant the condition of approval for the window signage. They just purchased the property. They will be cleaning this property up, and so we did cover that, so please keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is my motion with added conditions.
Thank you. Motion to approve Item Number 32 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Moving on now to Item Number 33, which is SUP 54783. The applicant is Coster Finance LLC. The owner is Altamira Shopping Center LLC. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,573 square foot auto title loan use with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residential use where 200 feet is required, and to allow a 120-foot distance separation from a similar use where 1,000 feet is required at 4990 West Craig Road, Suite 1, in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the applicant proposes to add an auto title loan use to an existing shopping center use at 4990 West Craig Road, Suite Number One. The proposed location fails to comply with the minimum distance separation requirements from a residentially zoned property and a financial institution specified. The required distance separation waiver reinforces the unsuitability of this site for the proposed auto title loan use. The use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the special use permit. Additional letters of support and protest have been received after publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicant, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Ed Garcia with the Firm of Holland &amp; Hart, 9555 Hillwood Drive. As staff indicated, this is an application for a special use permit for a auto title loan company. I should clarify, this is, while it is a high-interest lender, it is Coster's Finance traditionally is a more of the traditional financial institution, short-term lender. They don't typically engage in auto title loans while, but under your code, the auto title is kind of a catch-all, which allows them to do all types of short-term lending. So as opposed to coming in for the traditional short-term lending, they chose to come in for the auto title lending classification, which is what they've done under all their locations. So about three or four years ago, we came through, went to change in state law and changed all of the city locations to reflect them being an auto title location. And the reason I think that's important is because one of the waivers, the 125, the 120-foot waiver from a similar location is an auto title loan location. If you're, and I'm not sure what map you're looking at, but if you look at around the corner onto Decatur Boulevard is where you see the location for, I believe it's a Title Max location. Different model, that's why we think, we think they're, they offer auto title loans. I'm not sure if they offer traditional short-term lending like Coster's does, but it's not something that Coster's typically engages in, even in those locations where it is so licensed. I would also, so we think that it's entirely appropriate for the area. Again, that is a significant distance away, although, of course, under your code, it is measured property line to property line, the distance between those two locations. But while they may have a similar classification, they actually conduct business quite differently. So, and then the, I would like to address the request for the residential waiver. That is a zero-foot residential waiver. If you look at the locator map, you can see that the property where it is located directly to the west is the residence we're talking about, while there, but there is a block wall which separates those residents from the location where we would be going in on the end of this commercial building. And frankly, if you wanted to be able to drive it from any of those locations on, behind the property for what we're requesting, the zero-foot setback, there's no access to any of those homes for any of those homes onto Craig Boulevard. They, it's, you're looking at about a mile and a half for them to access down, all the way down till they get to Camino Del Oro where they can access, and then they would be able to come onto Craig. So really, yes, as the crow flies, there, it is a, directly abutting the property to the rear of our property, but there's no direct access. They would either do that, or they're, they could, you could also access it on North Decatur, and I believe that, that distance is well over a half a mile for somebody to be able to drive that distance. So with that, we think it's entirely compatible with the area. We think it's consistent with the development. We're not, this is currently a vacant space inside the commercial center. There'll not be any new construction with this. We're simply going into something that's currently vacant. We think it's compatible with the comprehensive plan and with the surrounding area, and we respectfully request your approval. We are fine with all staff's recommendations, all conditions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Good evening. I'm Bill Curran with the Ballard's Bar Law Firm, 100 North City Parkway, Suite 1750. I represent Title Max. They are sort of of two minds about this. They have finally directed me as of this evening to come forward and express their reservations and objections to this. So I apologize, I don't have a better graphic. But from this, you can see the proposed location that I'm pointing to with my, okay, that's better. Thank you, Ed. Okay, I guess this would be the proposed location, right here on the corner. My client is down here, just around the corner, right on this parcel. Obviously, there's a lot of competition between people in this business. My client, up to this point, has tried to avoid coming forward and asking for waivers. He's tried to stay entirely in locations that have previously been approved. Doing so, however, has come at some very real cost because an approved location with zoning comes at a much higher price than a unapproved location. I guess he feels he has paid a premium price for the location he has. We realize that the purpose of your zoning is not necessarily protectionism of business operators, but on the other hand, it is to protect areas from being saturated with these types of businesses. And I guess he feels that he's entitled to protection also under that policy because he's paid the premium price, and if he, if these are going to be approved and put in the competition with somebody who's paid an expensive price, maybe he should reconsider. And he has not come in doing that. These are both big operators. I think Coster has 10 or 12 locations. Mine has maybe 30 or maybe more than that. They are business competitors. I guess the last thing I'd say about the point made that this will be a title loan-only location, once you approve it, it can be sold to anybody. Anybody can come in and do any of the activities that are included in this classification. So we think that you should enforce your ordinance and enforce the distance separation and respect what I urge are legitimate business interests of my client. I thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I'll open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Commissioner. It really doesn't come down to what ward or whose ward this is. What it comes down for me is when you have 120-foot distance, when it should be 1,000 feet from another one, that's a, that's a rule we should follow. Because if everybody puts them on top of each other, we're gonna, if we let you do it, then we're gonna have to let the next guy do it, and before you know it, we're gonna have four or five in a very condensed area, and I don't think it's fair to the neighbors. Unfortunately, that's how I look at it when I look at Ward One. I've had many discrepancies with people wanting to put them across the street from each other, and it's been very difficult for me to tell people no. But it's not difficult for me to do it tonight because when we have an ordinance and the ordinance has 100, 1,000 feet, and you're asking for 120 feet from another one, it just doesn't sit well with me personally, so you will not see my support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and the distance separation from residential, I don't want to say is less of a concern, but it, it is less of a concern out of the two evils there, or the two waivers. So because there's the block walls and this and that, and any, any place up and down Charleston or Sahara or anything else, you're, you're gonna be abutting residential at some point. But the big thing is the saturation in these, in these particular areas. That's why we have this rule. If it's a payday loan, or if it's a short, short-term, or auto title loan, or whatever, I see all these being the same, and evidently, our city does too, because we bundle them all together up into a group, and when we pass this text amendment or ordinance with a thousand-foot separation, distant, or distance separation, so, and saying those comments, I don't see how I could support this this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. May I make the motion?
Please do.
Thank you. My motion for SUP 54783 is to follow staff's recommendation this evening for denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please note that a yes vote is for denial.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to Item Number 34, which is SUP 54825. The applicant is Odyssey Charter School of Nevada. The owner is 6122 West Sahara Avenue LLC. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a public school primary use at 6150 to 6168 West Sahara Avenue in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to locate a public school primary use within an existing 14,483 square foot building at 6150 to 6168 West Sahara Avenue. The applicant is not proposing any exterior alterations to the existing 14,483 square foot building. However, the proposal includes the elimination of 11 parking spaces adjacent to the east side of the building. The parking spaces would be removed to provide a safe pickup and drop-off area for the children, as required by Title 1912. The proposed public school primary use has a less intense parking requirement than that of the existing office use. As such, the removal of the 11 parking spaces does not hinder the site's ability to meet minimum parking standards. The proposed use can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the existing and future surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Additional letters of support and protest have been received after publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Richard Gallegos, 6725 Southeastern, here on behalf of the applicant. I do have a couple of these school administrators here with me, should you have any questions for those folks. At this time, we, it's been a long night. We do understand and concur with staff's conditions and recommendations. However, I would like to ask for clarification on Public Works Item Number Six, and that is with respect to the school zone flashers. We understand, and we have no objection to providing those. However, we know that the timeframe, the design, the bidding, the construction can involve several months, so we would ask that a condition, or be clarified, or additional condition, that completion of the school zone flashers will not prohibit the issuance of a CVO certificate of occupancy for our school building. We'd like to get the children in this year, and we're prepared to move forward. So with that, we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening, Mr. Gallegos. How are you?
Good, thank you.
You know, the one thing that stuck out in me was Condition Number Six, that there would be the flashers for the site and that it would go through. So when you're saying you're not going to be ready, and because school starts in a week, when will you be ready?
It is our intent, through you, Mr. Chairman, to move forward with our building plans, with the tenant improvements of the building. In fact, we have an express meeting next Wednesday with the Building Department to procure building permits for the school. We've got a general contractor selected, and we could have our kids in this facility within the next couple of months. We know the flashers will take quite a bit longer, so while we're working on the flashers, we would like to, again, continue with the improvements of the building because the flashers will take probably six or eight months to, by time from today to actual installation.
So is it your feeling that if I put a six-month review on administrative review, that those flashers will be in place?
Yes, and it is our intent, again, to move forward as fast as we can. I just probably won't be as fast as it-
Those are very important to-
Oh, yes.
...this ward and to this neighborhood and to me.
And to us, too.
Okay, because that's one thing that stuck out in my mind. Did you want to say something?
Commissioner, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify that, rather than an administrative review, what I might suggest to you is that you modify Condition Number Six to state that the flasher shall be installed within six months of issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so that way the applicant is held to that date. I would also like to confer with Public- with Public Works to see if they have any issues with that timeframe being given to the applicant for the flashers.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Chairman, through you. I really don't recommend allowing that. If they're going to have, uh, children crossing the street, that's what the flashers are for, and I really wouldn't really recommend opening the school without having the flashes in place.
Agree.
You know, I, I, that's something that I agree with, uh, wholeheartedly. So, and, I mean, how many, uh, kids are gonna be coming into that school?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman.
I could ask the engineer to go to the overhead.
Uh, for, for the record, the school, uh, this is our subject building, uh, that we are here tonight on. The school currently, uh, has this L-shaped building to the north, which has been operating for, as a school, for fifteen years now. Uh, it has high school kids, uh, predominantly, uh, twelfth grade, eleventh grade, tenth grade. The purpose for our, our building and our expansion is really for the sixth and seventh graders. So, to, to answer your question, this school's been operating for fifteen years. We don't have a lot of children that cross, uh, Jones, however, uh, and we have never had any incidents in the past fifteen years. So, we think we can conduct school, uh, as we have been without any, uh, you know, s- uh, harm to the kids, if you will. We would just like to move forward with the building improvements while we're getting the flashers to make the whole area safe. Uh, and, and we just think that it's, uh, appropriate to ask for that, and, and again, because we've got a school to the north that's been there fifteen years with no flashers.
Thank you, Mr. Gregos. I'm gonna listen to my other commissioners before I make a motion.
Are these flashers gonna go across Jones? Is that what you're looking at?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, they could go across Jones and possibly on Sahara if Endot requires it as well.
'Cause if I'm not mistaken, right there on the Jones, I think there's almost a uneven height between the, uh, northbound and southbound traffic, and there's a pretty substantial barrier in between there. Are you really gonna be able to cross in that area?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, there's no crosswalk proposed at this time, but that what the school flashers do is alert, you know, the drivers, it, you know, brings the speed down to, I think, fifteen miles an hour. And so even people crossing on, uh, Sahara, it alerts them to the tra- to, uh, students on Sahara. And I, I don't think, there is a significant grade difference between, uh, Jones and this area, but I'm, I'm honestly not sure if there are gonna be students crossing, 'cause I think the bus stop is further to the north on Jones, and if anyone's crossing outside the, uh, you know, the areas, just to warn people in the area that there's students could be crossing.
Thank you. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, with their, uh, through you, question for Public Works. Sahara might be a little bit more difficult, but, um, I know that you'll put up stop signs every now and then, and people will continue to run them because they don't, they're not aware that you'll put up a stop sign, you'll put little flashers on top. Is there any way that possibly we could, uh, come up with some portable solution that stands on both sides and the, and the median and the side of the, the, the street, uh, that flashes and says school zone, um, that runs off of battery or solar, kinda like the stuff that you'll have for stop signs, just as a temporary measure, um, until they get the permanent signs up?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, I think we do have some that are, uh, solar-powered as well. I'm honestly not the, uh, you know, the traffic signal expert here, but we could maybe have a condition within that they work with us, you know, we, the way the condition's written now, they need to work with us either way on the location of the signals. We could possibly work on a temporary solution before the school opens, and maybe so, maybe a condition that, that they work with traffic on a temporary solution before, prior to school opening. The, the main reason for the, the flashes is this application introduced a bell time. I think they had two sessions, if I read the application correctly, it was about seventy-five students at a time in a session. Uh, one session, I think, was at, uh, eight o'clock in the morning, and then the other session was starting maybe an hour after that, and, and going for four hours at a time. So that's the reason for the flashers. They'll, they'll be on when the school sessions for, uh, pickup and drop-off, the basically opening and, and release.
And, Mr. Chairman, another question, um, for the applicant. What, when are you trying to open the school?
If I may, Mr. Chairman-
Certainly, please.
This is a non-traditional school, and I can certainly have the staff come up and really probably explain better than I. But, uh, the, the kids, I believe, only require to come once a week to the school. So there's, there's not a traditional school that you have, you would normally associate with. So these dynamics are a little bit different. And again, that's why some folks didn't really, uh, even realize there was a school there for fifteen years. Um, thirty thousand square feet, uh, probably close to two thousand students probably overall. So, we believe we were operating very low-key. Uh, we do understand the need, uh, for flashers. We want our kids or anybody in that area to be safe. However, we feel we can move forward with the improvements of this building. Uh, while we're working on the flashers and get these kids housed, we're only talking about four classrooms in the new area. And, and so we just felt if we can work with the city, because we know that timeframe to get flashers will take months versus sixty days to get these kids in this part of the building. So we feel because of the different dynamics, the non-traditional school, our request is warranted.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if my answer, or if my question was ever addressed. When, when, no, what time or anything else, what, what month or what date are you planning on opening the school?
We, we, our goal is to, uh, have these improvements done by the end of September.
End of September. And when are you planning on opening the school for students to come in?
The, again, the school is technically open to the north.
Okay.
When we build this, uh, expansion area, we'll take those kids and move them, uh, to the south, if you will. So, our goal's to have the completion done by the end of September. School is, uh, opening August, uh, sure here shortly. We do, again, have enough room, although it'll be a little tight, uh, because this plan is for our expansion needs in the future. We can currently serve our, our, our kids' needs today. Uh, this, again, expansion will help them as we grow in the future. So, September thirtieth was our date.
Perfect. Then, Mr. Chairman, through you, and just tell me one more time, how many students do you currently have, and how many are you planning on adding?
Just tell me. Just tell me. Four hundred? Four hundred for the middle school, for the sixth and seventh graders.
Is this what you currently have, or what you're adding?
That's what we're adding.
Okay.
Currently, we have? How many do we have currently overall? Eighteen hundred overall, currently. K through twelve.
I think it would, uh, I think it'd be nice to be able to throw up some flashers, even if they're temporary. I think that what Lucian said was working with them to find some temporary solution. I don't think it would be cost prohibitive. I think they're pretty inexpensive, so I think, uh, maybe if they could work together, that would make me feel most comfortable about this application. Other than that, I think it's a great project.
I do too, Mr. Gregos. Is that possible?
Yes, uh, we would just ask, uh, for the city to, uh, help, uh, with us in timing and scheduling as fast as possible. We're ready to move forward, uh, immediately, so.
Anybody else wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, so my motion, Mr. Gregos, is going to be for approval of special use, uh, permit, um, five, four, eight, two, five, um, with, um, condition number six adding that you're going to meet with, uh, um, Public Works to, um, put in temporary, uh, flashers to notify the drivers if there's students there, and that in six months that the permanent flashers will be in place. How's that?
That's, uh, agreeable.
Agreeable. That would be my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to approve item number thirty-four carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Have a good night. Going to our last item, number thirty-six, which is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Do any members of the public wish to speak? Saying none. Mr. Evans, did you wanna speak?
No, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sl- we'll go to the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, uh, Ms. Chairman, this is, uh, Flynn Fag's last meeting with us, and, uh, just wanted to say a few things. Before I moved here, I heard of Flynn Fag, and, uh, my corporate office instructed me to go sit down and meet with him, and, because when everybody flew into town, they said he was the most knowledgeable person that they met while they were out here. And so whenever I flew into town and I start talking to different people at the city, um, I was not really getting anywhere that quick, and I called Flynn, and he picked up the phone, and he said, "Come down and meet with him," and, uh, one of the first people at the city who gave me direction, a lot of direction. And, uh, ever since then, uh, over the past ten, twelve years, just been a valuable asset to the city. I really hate to see him go. Um, he's, he's taught me a lot, uh, throughout the years, and definitely up here, um, being on the planning commission, uh, don't think I really could have achieved everything that I can, that I've achieved in this town without you. So, thank you. You'll be greatly, uh, greatly missed.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, um, you know, uh, people look at this, uh, planning commission like it's, um, just a bunch of people volunteering their time to, uh, uh, you know, do, do some zoning and planning. But, um, with Flynn at the helm, um, not only do, do you learn a lot, but you have, what I've learned from Flynn is that he has been able to balance the, um, the public with the commission and come to a common ground. Uh, recently, um, he sent out an email to tell us that he was leaving, and Commissioner Bonar is not here this evening, but Commissioner Bonar's been around the block a lot, and he also sat on the county commission. And, um, I wanna read just a bit what he said in his, um, in his email back to Flynn. And he said very simply that, "In the time that I've known you, one of the strengths I've observed, um, was how much you recognize from the public side and how it takes to make things work and how it makes things positively come to happen. Take my word." This is a very rare attribute. Um, he says that his experiences lets the good ones know that it's often essential to walk in a thin line that separates the private and the public sectors. And for that reason, Mr. Bonar says he will miss you. Um, I'm a very sentimental person. I'm gonna miss your professionalism. I'm gonna miss your compassion. I'm gonna miss bringing you a cake. Um, and I'm gonna miss you, 'cause you're my friend. And, um, cheers to you, sir, and, uh, Godspeed, and, uh, thank you very much.
Commissioner Goines?
I concur with the first two commissioners, and I'll be ver- very short. Um, I've known Flynn a pretty good while. I'm one of the senior members up here, but, um, you know, a, a true gentleman, consummate professional. Uh, one of the things I really like about, uh, Flynn is no matter whether you send him an email or a voicemail, you can almost guarantee within, before the end of the close of business, he will respond to you, and, uh, for that, um, I, I commend you as well. But I just wanna say thank you. Uh, you're just a, you're a human being. You're a great human being in, in my eyes, and I wish you a lot of luck. And I know a couple of people in Palm Springs. I don't know if it's a hood in Palm Springs, but I'mma, I'mma hook you up.
[laughing]
Thank you.
Commissioner Moody?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, what I love about Flynn is he has an unending supply of M and M's. I've, I've been a beneficiary of that, so thank you. Uh, you've been a gentleman and a scholar. Uh, even when I know, uh, city projects, you've come in here, you've worked hard on that we've had a problem with. You've been nothing but gracious and professional, and I've learned a lot from you. Thank you, and good luck to you.
And I too, like Commissioner Goines, echo everybody else's comments here. I've enjoyed very much sitting next to you here for the, almost two years. Uh, you've taught me a lot. You're a veritable encyclopedia of city planning. That's probably the best way to describe you. Uh, you've been a consummate gentleman. Uh, you've been a great advisor. You've been great for the city of Las Vegas. We're gonna definitely miss you. I don't know what Palm Springs doing over there, but they seem to be luring the best away from us. So good luck to you and Godspeed.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, I get a rebuttal here. And I'm glad that this didn't turn into a roast of some kind, so thank you very much. You know, it was a, a tough decision for me. I've been here in Las Vegas and called it my home for the past eleven years, and serving as the planning director has been an honor for me, and especially working with you all. You know, we haven't always agreed on all the matters that come before us, and we've had some healthy discussions, I guess you could say. But I wanna tell you that I appreciate your input, your professionalism, the fact that you care so much about the city of Las Vegas, that you're here serving, you're giving your input, you're reviewing projects and trying to make this a better place, and I think that's what we're all trying to do. No director does anything by himself. He has a good staff behind him. I wanna commend all the people that I've worked with in the Department of Planning over the years. Terrific folks, and everyone at the city of Las Vegas that I've worked with over the last eleven years. I appreciate all the help and support that I've received. Uh, and again, thank you all very much. It's been an honor.
Cheers. Anybody else saying none? Meeting adjourned.